We have any decisions or public comments? Hearing none, welcome everybody. Consideration of approval of the agenda.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Clerk call roll.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
The agenda is approved as submitted.
Consideration of approval of the minutes of the May 2 and May 11 meetings. Discussion or questions?
So moved, Your Honor.
Clerk call roll.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
The minutes of the May 2 and May 11 meetings are approved. Consideration of approval of the consent calendar. Any questions regarding the consent calendar? So moved.
Second.
Clerk call roll.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Consent calendar is approved as submitted. Business of the mayor. I have two proclamations. One is the poppy day, the other is Memorial Day. Want to step up and explain them. Take either way. Have your name, please.
I'm Kathy Gurkin and this is my daughter Clara Gurkin. And we are here from the American Legion Auxiliary with asking for the proclamation for the poppy day. And these are distributed and for donation, the money goes to veterans. Most of the money stays here in Floyd County to help our veterans locally here.
Any questions?
Any kind of special activities you got going on, other than the poppy sales?
For, this will be the Friday and Saturday before Memorial Day will be what we'll be doing. And then the junior members will have, at the Memorial Day services, will have little handouts for those attending.
Neat, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the other proclamation?
Where did he go?
Where did he go? He was here.
Who, Art?
Art.
He's right there.
He's right there.
Art?
Oh, I couldn't see him behind that.
Are you ready?
Yeah.
Keep it down to 45 minutes, Whitey. My name is Art White. I'm a member of the, member of the proclamation, or I forget what it is that done there. And Memorial Day is on May 30th. It's two weeks from the day. And I see your proclamation for Memorial Day. There's going to be quite a bit of activity on Memorial Day. And I didn't know I was supposed to ask for the proclamation, but I guess that's all right. And here, Mary Mooberry was here for another request. I don't know if you want to do that now or not.
No, that'll be separately on the agenda.
Well, proclamation for Memorial Day is something that's been done for many, many years. And the mayor comes up to courthouse and reads the proclamation, so I'm here about this. Proclamation for Memorial Day. Thank you.
Okay, any questions, Art? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the proclamation?
Second.
Clerk call roll.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Okay, the proclamations are approved. I'll come down and read them.
Here you go, Mayor. That should be enough for poppies for all of us.
Ooh, this is a good deal.
Thank you. Thank you, Delane. Delane?
Oh my God, you should put it right where my lunch is.
Even after the Friesman clock comments tonight.
Did he get one press?
Where's the poppy? Leave me about $3 to my name. America is the land of freedom preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizen soldiers. And millions who have answered the call to arms have died on the field of battle. And a nation at peace must be remembered, reminded of the price of war and the debt owed to those who have died in war. And whereas the red poppy has been designated as a symbol of sacrifice of lives in all wars, and whereas the American Legion Auxiliary has pledged to remind America annually of this debt through the distribution of the memorial flower. Now therefore, I, James A. Irvin, mayor of Charles City, Iowa, do hereby proclaim Friday, May 27, 2016, as poppy day in Charles City and ask that all citizens pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing the memorial poppy on this day. And as we all know, it's a continuing obligation. We still have active combatants in the Middle East and so on. So the story goes on and the sacrifice goes on. Thank you very much for what you're doing.
Make sure you have the pocket of that money.
Art? Whereas brave men and women of our armed forces have valiantly defended this great republic in many wars and conflicts to ensure our rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas many of these brave men and women made the ultimate sacrifice and laid down their lives in the service of their country. And whereas all men and women who have defended our nation valiantly so that we, the citizens of the United States of America, do enjoy the freedoms granted us by our Constitution, shall have their memories preserved for eternity. And whereas it is our intention to remember deceased friends and relatives that are dear to us. Now therefore, I, James A. Irvin, mayor of Charles City, Iowa, do hereby proclaim Monday, May 30, 2016, as Memorial Day and urge all citizens of our community to take a few moments and to reflect upon the lives of the valiant men and women that have defended our nation and the lives of all of our dear friends and relatives. Signed by myself. So here is the proclamation. Thank you for obtaining that. And I know you're here also to ask for some specific procedures. We'll get to that in just a few minutes.
Do you want to hang on this?
Because you want me to read it at the ceremony? I'll be happy to hang on.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Discussion.
Well, we received a request from Karen Anderson for Relay for Life for utilizing the Ivy parking lot, the city parking lot located over there by Ivy.
She's standing up, by the way.
So I'm going to have Karen explain what she'd like to do.
There you go. I presented before the planning committee and have talked with both Ivy and with First Security Bank. And our plan is on the Clark Street entrance into the Ivy parking lot, that we would be on the right side or the east side of that entryway in the corner. And the radio is going to be broadcasting that we're there. And from 7:30 in the morning till 9:30, we'll be there. And anyone who wants to come by, we're calling it drive-by donation. So they come by, drop in a donation, they get a cupcake from Kim's Cupcakery. And we are also offering a special gift of a quilted, insulated, handmade tote bag for the first, I think, three or four. They give us a donation of $100. So those bags have been donated to us. So we would like permission to be in the corner there and receive donations for Relay.
Okay, do we have questions or additional comments?
I'd so move.
Second.
Looking pretty good. Clerk call roll.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Your request is granted. Okay, request for street closure for Flores de Mayo Parade, May 28. May not be here, right?
I don't see him.
He submitted it.
Yeah.
We discussed this last week and it's a similar request that we've received in previous years with the exception of this year, there, instead of going towards the Knights Columbus or Columbus Hall and crossing Main Street, there will be, starting at the Catholic Church, coming up Clark, taking a right on Wisconsin, another right on Blunt, and a left there to the Senior Center this year, on May 28, 2:30 PM.
They talked to the police department and everything like that and everything's good to go.
Yeah, they've done this, not this round, but they've done this before.
Aye, so move.
Second. Clerk call roll.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
The request is granted. Request for street closure for Memorial Day service at courthouse. Discussion.
Well, at our workshop last week, we received a request, or we talked about it briefly, about the idea of, for this coming Memorial Day, there's been a request made to close off that half block of Main Street outside of where they have the memorial service there at the courthouse. So the request is to close Main Street from the Gilbert Street intersection to Court Street for the time of the service, which I think we discussed would have been about an hour, hour and a half probably at most. So we've had some discussion, I know, we've talked with the street department and the police department, and I don't think we'd have an issue with being able to close that. You know, typically, when you close like a state highway or something like that, which is next to this, you have to get notice. And since we have left-hand turn lanes, right-hand turn lanes in that area, the right-hand turn, left-hand turn are technically not on the state highway. And talking with them for this duration, they said that wouldn't be a problem to do that. So I think what the plan is, we're going to stage a couple squad cars. One of the- Probably one squad car. One squad car, okay. All right. Help control traffic. And historically, we do typically close that northwest lane, the lane directly adjacent to the courthouse, so there can be parking right alongside there for those with mobility issues. But the request this year is to close that entire section off there.
And that's just going to be for an hour or so in the morning?
Yes.
I so move.
Second.
Further discussion?
I would just say that I was one that had some several concerns as far as that block. I'll support it, I just want to vocalize my concerns. I don't know if the adjoining businesses were contacted. You got Subway, Stock Glass, Vance Insurance, Charles City Realty, I don't know if any of those were contacted about this. Their main access points are right off the road there. Now, however, Memorial Day, most businesses will be closed. Those businesses, at least half of them, will be open. I'm not sure, I understand the location, so they want to have that street. However, Court Street with full access of the county parking lot, or Jackson, me would have been a better choice. However, I understand the location of it, but I'm not a fan of closing off a main road in the middle of the day. We do close the bridge, or last year, for the 4th of July fireworks. However, that's later at night, less traffic. But again, I'll support it, but I want my concerns on the record.
I guess when you talk about 4th of July, I beg to differ that there's a significant amount of traffic that impacts on the 4th of July. I guess this is an hour, hour and a half deal. We can try it once and see how it goes along. I don't know that it's that big a deal.
Plus Subway and the county parking lots have other access other than off of Main Street, so they will have access. You got a motion?
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second, yes.
Yes. If you're going to speak, you have to get up to the microphone.
Thank you, Art White. I'm with the Patriotic Committee. I appreciate what you're saying. Couple reasons for asking that to be closed off with. Number one, we have elderly people that cannot walk that distance. So if we can take those cars and bring them up, and the elderly people can bring their chairs and step out of the vehicles, and that would allow them to be there for the 10 o'clock services. And I think that's very important. Another thing that I feel this year is very important, and that the band, Charles City Band is going to be there. Jake Gasman called me one day and he asked me about having the band up there for this year. And I thought that was pretty commendable for them to, normally, they have gone to Mason City for band festivals, so I feel that that's pretty awesome, that they can do that. And I just wanted to bring that up. And the other thing is going to be, in my opinion and other people's opinion, I would invite everybody to come to see this. There's a lady, Mary Mooberry, was supposed to be here this evening, she asked me to come. There would be a flag of every branch of the service. It would be up there by the courthouse. If you were at the high school last year, you've seen students carrying those military flags in there. And I think that was pretty awesome, that you could see that. I don't mean to bore you, but I just want you to know a couple of things that are going to take place. And I do thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Art.
Any other questions or discussion? Clerk call roll.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
The request is approved. Public hearing on fiscal year 2016 budget amendment. Open the hearing, have an affidavit of publication.
Yes, Your Honor.
Any written comments or objections?
None, Your Honor.
Any oral comments or objections?
Move to close?
Second.
Clerk call roll.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
The hearing is closed. Consideration Resolution 38-16, approving budget amendment for fiscal year 2016. Discussion.
Well, this is where we amend our actual operating budget for this fiscal year that's going to be ending here at the end of June. Anytime that you have any of your expenses go over from particular functions, you have to amend the budget, and so we are amending the budget this year as we do most years. The main reasons for this amendment include the refunding of that loan that we had, the purchase of the aerial fire truck, and the timing of the UV disinfection project along with some housing capital projects. So in the end, the net change between revenues and expenses was an additional $26,331 in expenses. And a good portion of that would have been money that we'd, had already acquired and hadn't spent it in the previous year and are now spending it once these projects are being completed.
Nothing has changed since we looked at this the other night.
Nothing has changed.
We went through this on planning session, Jim.
I'd so move.
Second. Clerk call roll.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Resolution 38-16 is approved. Public hearing on sewer revenue loan and dispersment agreement. Open the hearing, have an affidavit of publication.
Yes, Your Honor.
Any written comments or objections?
None, Your Honor.
Any oral comments or objections?
Move to close the hearing. Second.
Clerk call roll.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
The hearing is closed. Consideration Resolution 39-16, taking additional action on proposal to enter into a sewer revenue loan and dispersment agreement and to borrow money they're under in a principal amount not to exceed $1,790,000. Discussion.
Well, this is the end of a long process when it comes to the, dealing with our wastewater treatment plant in terms of bacteria. We received notice several years ago about getting some type of process in place to help bring down the E. coli bacteria levels. And in the end, we ended up using a UV light disinfection process. And so those have been installed. There's, there was initially three planned, or three possible phases that could have made up this project. And we did two of those three processes, two of those three phases, I should say. We've had the UV lighting up and running here since the snow thawed, and it is, it's doing its job, it's taking the bacteria levels down. So it looks like we can avoid a Phase 3 in bacteria reduction. So this SRF loan, this is the state relevant loan fund, would be a loan to pay for the total projects, the two phases, and the amount of 1.79 million, actually, we're going to be looking to borrow 1,745,000, so we're well within that amount set. So here in the near future, pending your approval.
What was the estimate of Phase 3 that we don't have to do?
Don't have that estimate because we didn't have to go into that to find out what else we need, what we need. But I think we were pre-approved to borrow 2.5 million.
Okay.
So we're borrowing 1.75. We even quite a bit under that.
With the potential project that's kind of, you know, bouncing around here right now for us, could that possibly bring back Phase 3? Or wouldn't that-
Different issues.
Different issues, okay.
Yeah. When we talk about other wastewater treatment plant upgrades, it's, the bacteria is not, it's the other loadings that are the issue.
I just was curious. Thank you.
Motion for 39-16?
Motion, yes.
I'd so move.
Motion for 39-16.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? Clerk call roll.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
The resolution 39-16 is approved. Consideration of the first reading of ordinance 1091 for rezoning of properties located in the 300 block of North Jackson. Recommendation from the planning and zoning.
Yes, the city recently required, received a request to rezone property at 305 North Jackson. This is a single-family home and the rezoning was to make it into multi-family zoning. But the current zoning on that parcel is B2, general business district, and that would require rezoning to R3 multi-family. During the review of this area, we determined that, actually, the entire half-block along North Jackson from Kelly to Blunt Streets would be better off served as a different zoning district. Currently, the whole area is zone B2. What we were recommending is the art center be rezoned to conservation open space. That will match the zoning across the street, which is same as Central Park. And the other properties along North Jackson would be rezoned to R3 general, multi-family residence district. Now, the city council did submit this rezoning request to the Planning and Zoning Commission for study and recommendation. And the commission held a public hearing at their May 11 meeting, and they are returning to the city council a recommendation to approve the requested rezoning. We'd recommend that the council consider planning and zoning's recommendation and approve the first reading of ordinance 1091.
Questions or discussion?
I think as we talked at one of the last meetings, the zoning itself makes sense. I had concerns before, as well as, you know, converting 305 to multi-family. There's potential for, even with the best intentions in mind, there's the possibility of it being detrimental to the property. However, that may not be the case, but I'm not a fan of it being multi-family. But that's not the discussion, the discussion is zoning and that fits the area, but that's my concern with that specific property.
When you have a multi-family zoning like that, could someone potentially down the road buy that property and take it back to being a single-family residence?
Well, they can always request that rezoning.
I mean, would it have to be rezoned to do that? Or could it just be a single-family residence?
The house could go back to single-family.
No, no, they wouldn't have.
I was going to say, it can just go back to, so there's real no detriment to the property long-term.
Is there any definition of how big the apartments have to be? Could they put, theoretically, put a lot of really small apartments in there?
No, we don't have a minimum size. I know that, as of this time, that's not the plan for it.
But it's still had to comply with state fire code and our, our uniform rental code as well.
I'd so move.
Second. Further discussion? Clerk call roll.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Resolution 40-16, resolution directing clerk to publish notice of hearing on ordinance 1091, amending the zoning classification of two parcels located in Block 8 in the original plot of St. Charles, now incorporated as Charles City, Iowa, from B2 general business district to R3 multi-family residence district and conservation and open space district, respectively. Consideration of Resolution 40-16, setting a date for public hearing in ordinance 1091. Discussion.
Well, we're recommending that a public hearing, as well as a second reading of the ordinance, is considered at the June 6 council meeting. So we'd recommend approval of Resolution number 40-16, setting June 6 at 7:00 PM as the date and time for the public hearing, as well as authorizing the city clerk to publish the notice.
So moved.
Second. Clerk call roll.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Resolution 40-16 is approved. Consideration of first reading of ordinance 1092, amending zoning ordinance pertaining to ramps. Again, a recommendation from planning and zoning.
Well, the city code enforcement department, they continually receive requests for building permits for handicap ramps. These ramps are basically an extension of the front porch or front deck. And oftentimes, in order to meet the ramp slope requirements, these ramps have to be extended into the front yard setback. To go into the required setback area, that requires a variance from the board of adjustment. So city attorney Ralph Smith is drafting an- So city attorney Ralph Smith is drafting an ordinance amendment, adding a new subsection to section four of the zoning ordinance. This will allow the zoning administrator to approve the encroachment of a handicap ramp. Now, the administrator's approval will be contingent that the ramp can only remain if the occupant that needs it is residing in the residence, and when that is no longer the case, the ramp will have to be removed within six months. Since this is amendment to the zoning ordinance, it first has to be reviewed with the planning and zoning commission. The commission did hold a public hearing at their May eleventh meeting, and they're returning to the city council a recommendation to approve the ordinance amendment to section four of the ordinance. So we'd recommend that the city council follow the planning and zoning's recommendation and approve the first reading of ordinance ten ninety-two.
So you have a first reading and an approval of hearings? I'm trying to figure out how many things you've lumped into this.
The first would be the first reading.
Okay? Further discussion?
So move.
Second.
Clerk, we'll call the roll.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
First reading is approved.
Reading of ordinance ten ninety-two, an ordinance amending section four general provisions of the Charles City zoning ordinance by adding a new subsection to allow ramps and other structures providing accessibility to residential structures for handicap individuals in situations where such structures might otherwise violate provisions of the zoning ordinance.
Next up is consideration of resolution forty-one dash sixteen, setting date of hearing on ordinance ten ninety-two. Discussion.
We're also recommending that a public hearing is held in the second reading of this ordinance amendment is considered at the June sixth council meeting. So we'd recommend approval of resolution forty dash sixteen, setting June sixth at seven PM as the date and time for the public hearing, as well as authorizing the city clerk to publish the notice of the hearing.
Excuse me, that's forty-one sixteen, isn't it?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out where you're at.
Forty-one dash sixteen.
Yeah, I thought you said forty, okay. So move.
Second.
Clerk, call or roll.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Okay, resolution forty-one dash sixteen is approved. Consideration of resolution forty-two dash sixteen, approving change in contract with HUD for extra vouchers. Discussion.
Hi, Heidi Nielsen, the housing director. Currently, the Ninth Street Group Home is operating under a HUD program called the Multifamily Housing Program. It's essentially a site-based voucher program, and there are twelve units in the complex, but right now, there's only eleven occupied units. And they have opted to not renew their contract with HUD as of August first of this year, and HUD has approached us and asked us to take over those vouchers. There would be eleven vouchers that would be given to the city, and the vouchers would essentially be operated and run the same as the rest of the other housing choice vouchers that we have. HUD would be subsidizing those vouchers at the same rate as our existing vouchers. Upon approval of this, we would meet with the families and determine their eligibility, and the eligibility standards would be the same as our current program standards. And after that, the families would be given an option of whether or not they wanted to stay in those units or move. You know, we're not required to take on these vouchers as the, as the administrator, but as a protection to the voucher holders, they'll be given the vouchers anyway, and then HUD will look for another agency to administer those vouchers. So it's my opinion that it's in the best interest of the city to keep these vouchers in our program.
Questions or discussion?
That's kind of the main thing we talked about at the planning session, was, you know, about these vouchers, is if we just said, well, no, we, we don't want any more vouchers, they don't go away.
No.
They just go to another authority.
Right.
Which more or less would be like Mason City or another one around, and they, they deal, they, they will be working with the vouchers, and we have no control over the authority of them, whereas with ours, we have, you have, your office has the ability to deal with them at a lot more local level.
Right, and all of our local policies and rules will apply, and if we don't administer them, we don't have any control over that.
Yeah, they're, they're still going to be here, whether we say yes or no. So we may, might as well have local control over them.
Right. The management of the property is still going to be the same owner, just as the other vouchers, but we would have control over the administration of the vouchers.
You're going to have to hire more help to do these additional apartments.
Well, you're going to pay for it.
I don't want to, but no.
Further discussion?
There's a little bit of difference in price between what these people are currently paying and what potentially they could pay.
The rent's a little bit higher, but part of the enhanced voucher that they're going to get gives them the flexibility to pay a little bit higher rates. I mean, it's not an unreasonable rent, it's just higher than what we usually work with.
Right.
We had a comment in the back, too, I believe, in the crowd.
I have a question.
Could you step up? Could, pardon me, ma'am. Could you step up and give your name?
Yeah, I'm Pat Beaver. What is the address of the property that you're speaking of?
Three ten North Ninth Street.
Nope.
Is that in Charles City?
North doesn't sound right.
Ninth Street. Is that a, a house, or is that, is that one of the group homes?
It's one of the group homes.
Okay.
Immediately yoked to the west of Ninth Street Chautauqua building.
Yeah, and I just needed to know if it was a residential home or if it was a comprehensive.
Other questions or discussion?
I'd so move, your honor.
Second.
Clerk, call or roll.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Resolution forty-two dash sixteen is approved.
Thank you. Thanks, Heidi.
Consideration of resolution forty-three dash sixteen, approving change in lease with IV for parking spaces for garden subsidies, or supplies. Supplies.
I think, I think we finally got this figured out. It's been, it's been a change this year on what they're doing, so they've been kind of feeling their way on this, but initially, we, we agreed to rent them what they requested, which was six parking stalls, six individual parking stalls, and they were using basically six double stalls, or actually, it turns out to be eleven stalls. So once, now that we have that clarified and there that they want to use, it's, in your packet, it shows a, a drawing there, which is what it shows that one aisle from, basically, from the end cap, including the end cap, up to that first cart corral. So eleven parking stalls, and they were, they're going to be renting it for two months. They've already paid us an initial amount, so the difference they had was forty-five to make it, to make it even then for the rest of those parking stalls. The plan is to have that, those items be done, using that area by the first of June.
June or July?
Oh, I'm sorry, July.
So how much totally has the rent either gone up or down?
Well, the rent per stall is staying the same, it's just, we've added, each, each stall equates to nine dollars a month, so we're going from essentially fifty-four, which we'd rounded to fifty-five, to ninety-nine. And so they brought in a, a check for the, the difference, which should be the additional forty-five, I guess, yeah.
Which turns out to be, how much for the year? I'm just trying to, so people can grasp what, I think the word around town is this is a much bigger deal than what I think it really is, so.
Two hundred and fifty-three, two fifty-four. They paid a hundred and sixty-five already, and then they paid the additional.
Okay, yeah.
I think.
Because they want it for, for three months.
Yeah, they did want it for three months.
And both greenhouse facilities are essentially paying the same rate per stall?
They are, they are. We, we charged differently before because we were basing on the actual footprint. Tyson's has kept a tighter footprint with actual individual stalls, whereas historically, IV had spread out a little bit further, so we were, we were basing on actual square footage used, but since this year, they're not having a display, they're just having storage in the, within the parking stalls, where we were basing on that per-stall rate.
Not, not part of this item, but related to it, they're not putting the tent up. IV is not putting the tent up this year.
That's correct. They're utilizing the, the space in front of the store.
In my opinion, and I've heard about it, it looks a lot crappier around there with everything shoved up against the store, plus it's really tightened up and it's for future use, but they're entitled to do that, that's their property.
Right, and they, they had spread some of the merchandise out a little further than what we had agreed to, so we're working on getting that down. They had three end caps used out there, and one is gone, and I talked to the store director this evening, and the second one should be gone by tonight, so we should be down to the one.
It's just getting on the same page is what it comes down to.
By August one.
By the time, by the time they're ready, they'll close it down.
I'd so move.
Second. Sir, second?
Yes, Dan.
I did, I did.
Okay. Clerk, call or roll.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Resolution forty-three dash sixteen is approved. Consideration of a motion approving sale of metal structure along walking trail. Discussion.
Well, we, we were informed of interest in obtaining that structure along the walking trail, just north of the highway and on the north-south portion of the Charlotte Western Trail. We, we did receive one bid for the structure, and I made a copy of that and placed it before you tonight. The bid is for five hundred dollars to remove the structure and foundation, and that is five hundred dollars that we would pay them, not, not pay us. The, the bid isn't very clear, you could read it both ways, and I called to confirm, and that would be, that would be a charge to us. It would eliminate the structure and get the foundation out of there, but.
So who retains the steel?
I'm sorry?
Who retains the steel?
The bidder.
Could I ask, as long as Dirk's here, could I ask Dirk a question? Derek, since we got end loaders and backhoes and everything else, how long would it take us to get rid of that just ourselves?
Maybe a day.
Okay, and if we could re-advertise it and just sell, sell off the steel, you know, could we take care of the foundation ourselves?
Yes.
The city?
Yep.
I guess here and that, I'd say maybe we just try and get rid of the steel and reject this bid.
I would agree. I mean, we were, you know, I was expecting to get a bid to pay us for it. If anything, a dollar or greater would probably be fine.
We kind of, in a way, did, just.
Well, that's, I wasn't sure. I was ready to accept a bid for them to pay us five hundred dollars for this building.
Absolutely. Well, I'm glad you had clarified.
No, so it's.
But is it, is it, you know, time-wise and everything, you know, with the manpower involved, is it, is it in our best interest to just do it ourselves, as, as Delane is thinking?
Well, we saw about two, three guys for a day, day and a half.
Yeah, I would think it would come down pretty easy.
As I say, you know, if we get somebody in to take the steel off of it, and all you had to mess with is the.
The concrete.
The concrete.
Yeah, bringing some filled dirt back in.
Do we have any secondary regulations as far, I mean, it's not a, it's not a house, we don't have to worry about asbestos potentially, or?
We already abated asbestos.
Okay.
That was the first step we did.
Okay.
It's all the siding.
Already been done.
That's why the steel structure is probably in such good shape, it has asbestos siding all over it. So we, we abated that, or we had a company abate that last, through our, as part of our new, ongoing nuisance abatement programming, and so now we've just had that structural standing over there.
So we shouldn't have any, any further things to do other than just tear down and, and fill, essentially?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not a problem for us. I mean, it was.
You have the equipment to make the time, and then you can charge it to Heidi's housing budget.
So what do we need to do, move to reject all bids? Since that's where we're at?
I think it'd be good to.
Is there, is there a legal opinion on how we need to do that?
Yes.
Just reject it?
Motion to reject the.
I'd rather you make a motion to reject than take no action.
I'd so move that we reject bids received. Second.
Further discussion? Clerk, call or roll.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
The sale is rejected. Consideration of resolution forty-four dash sixteen, approving purchase of mower for street department. Discussion.
Dirk's interested in buying a new mower for the street department, so you want to talk to us about the bids you received and?
This would be to replace a thirty-one-year-old wing mower that we have on the tractor right now. Went out for bids and got four bids back. They're all competitive, but I would recommend staying with the Charles City bid at Saw Truck Implement.
It is the high bid at thirteen thousand, five fifty, but the low bid is twelve, seven, sixty. So, I mean, the difference is very minimal, and it's a business right in town, and so we'd be happy with that piece.
We have a policy on it, right?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
You no longer need the scissors that we originally budgeted? That much?
No, because we've looked into that mower, Jerry, and to get it certified every year costs a lot of money, so it's not worth it, in my opinion.
Are we going to keep the old mower, Dirk? Are you going to trade that in?
It will probably go down to the DOT auction.
Okay, okay, so it'll be going down the road, one way or another?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd move for the bid from Saw Truck for thirteen, five fifty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dirk.
Any further discussion? Clerk, call or roll.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Resolution forty-four dash sixteen is approved. Consideration of a motion to approve engagement letter with Baird for fire truck loan. Discussion.
This is, as you know, and as you may recall, with, like, bond counsel, whenever we're working with them on projects, we're, anymore, we're, we're saying the engagement letter, so we're doing the same thing with, with Paul Dalla and Baird here to work as our placement agent for the fire truck. We need a council approval of the engagement letter, first and foremost.
Any further discussion regarding the engagement letter?
You guys have been two of the letter, and everything looked legit.
Yeah, read it, it's scary. No. It's, it's fine.
Second. Clerk, call or roll.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
The engagement letter is approved. Consideration of resolution forty-five dash sixteen, approving a loan agreement providing for the issuance of seven hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars general obligation fire truck acquisition notes, series two thousand sixteen A, and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same. Discussion.
We have Paul Dalla here tonight from Baird to kind of walk us through our fire truck placement.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. As you've been working last several months and, and putting together financing for, to fund the acquisition of the fire truck, and last week, we put together the final terms
We have Paul Downey here tonight from Baird to kind of walk us through our fire truck placement.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. As you've been working last several months and putting together financing for, to fund the acquisition of the fire truck, and last week we put together the final terms for your consideration tonight. The total size of the note, the total acquisition was seven-hundred, is seven-hundred-and-fifty, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. To that, there's fifteen-thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty dollars of costs, including our fee and bond counsel fee, Dorsey, to provide the tax-exempt opinion and the opinion on the statutory obligation. And then also capitalized interest in the amount of a little over twenty-six-thousand dollars to make the first payment, because that levy won't be in place prior to the collection of those dollars to make that payment. So capitalized interest was included to offset that interest cost. What we did in working with Steve, the most efficient way to access the fund was to solicit proposals from community banks that have ties here in Charles City. Rather than going to the public market, the costs incurred, just on the financing cost to go to the public market, would be too cost prohibitive on a loan of this size, so it was determined to go the private placement route by contacting local banks in town. We contacted four banks and received proposals from two of them. The best proposal by far was from First Citizens Bank, and they proposed an overall interest rate, which would be fixed for the terminal loan, of an average of two-point-three-three percent. And once you factor in the cost of financing, your cost of borrowing is a two-point-six-six percent. The structure of the loan, as you are aware, we fit it in with your existing loans that are payable from a debt service levy, and what we've done is structured it so there's interest only for the first couple of years, and then the total payment combined with your existing is roughly around one-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand dollars total, including the existing debt outstanding. So, overall, pleased with the proposal received, in comparing it to what you could have had on the public market as well, so it's still, it still is cost-efficient to go this route by accepting that proposal from First Citizens Bank, which is included in the resolution for your consideration. Any questions on the process or the structure of the financing? Be happy to answer it.
Further discussion or questions regarding the submissions?
You don't feel it's worthwhile to go any further trying to get public bids out east or whatever, because we got pretty good rates here?
No, I don't. The, there certainly may be better proposals out there, but by the time you go through that process again, rates can change, and there's not gonna be that much of a difference in your sensitivity by the time two weeks pass, ten basis points would have eaten up any savings.
It's good to know that we can keep it local and be very competitive with it.
I would so move, Your Honor.
Second.
Any further discussion? Questions? Clerk call the roll.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Resolution forty-five-sixteen is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Miscellaneous correspondence?
None, Your Honor.
City attorneys report.
Nothing.
City clerks report.
Next planning session will be May twenty-third at seven o'clock, and City Hall will be closed on May thirtieth for Memorial Day.
We can be open if we want to, though.
No, thank you.
Okay. City administrators report.
Yeah, just, this Wednesday will be meeting once again with simply essentials as we work through the poultry plant location and working on the needs of the plant there, so we'll be talking with them more on Wednesday, and then we'll, at one of our upcoming workshops, we'll be discussing broadband commission, so review and added discussion on the regional fiber study, so we'll be looking at next steps on the regional and local efforts with that. That's all I have there.
Okay. Board commissioner committee reports.
The broadband commission, as Steve mentioned, you know, that fiber ring project that we've gotten involved with is definitely very interesting, and I think it's something that we're gonna have to learn more about, but I think it's something that the city really needs to think long and hard about as far as possibly laying out some money to stay involved in that process and maybe even take it further.
Okay. Anything else on this? Or is there a motion to adjourn?
So move, Your Honor.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we're adjourned.
You didn't probe too much.
Thanks for the offer of the dollars.
But they've been very interested in you, and you've had the most of them.
Not me, I go for the drama every time.
Exactly, exactly. Quite possibly Davenport.
You can count on him.
We haven't noticed yet.
Okay, good. So you...